Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome into the study session for the Mesa City Council for April the 19th of 2021. Mr. Brady, do we think Mr. Thompson's on with us virtually?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there we go. Mr. Thompson, welcome. We have all of our council presidents for this meeting. The first item on our agenda is to review and discuss items on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Mr. Brady, I know that we have at least, staff has one presentation for us on the jail facility. Is that right?
Mayor, I apologize. We got distracted with a lot of topics last Thursday, but we do have a presentation for that. We'll come on up forward and, 4C, I think is the item.
4C?
4C, the ones we're talking about.
Okay. Currently, this is on the consent agenda, and this is additional information. Welcome.
Hello. Do you know how to pull it up?
No.
Mayor, Council, my name is John Pombier. I'm Assistant City Manager, and with me is Commander Jeff Cutler. He is going to provide you the presentation in just a minute. I wanted to kick it off by noting two very important things. First off, as part of this presentation, I want to make it very clear that none of this should be seen as a negative towards the county or the job that the county sheriff is currently doing. We've had a great relationship with Paul Penzone as county sheriff. We continually work with them to this day on our inmates that we do send over there, and we are only taking one aspect of their business, the misdemeanors from Mesa, and trying to provide a higher level of service at a more efficient cost for our employees, for the citizens. We are able to do that because we don't have to deal with every city in the valley, and we don't have to deal with both misdemeanor and felonies. So, we have a very good working relationship with the county, and we wanted to make sure we started off with that. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that this council understood that this is a, we see this as an incredibly positive thing for the city. Four years ago, when this went through, there were a lot of questions about what would come up and how this would work. We now will provide this presentation to you to show you just what a positive win we think this is across the board. I actually have called it now the three Cs of incarceration. The first one is care, and you will be impressed with the customer care we give to our inmates, be it classes available to them, be it the accommodations that they are provided. Across the board, we believe we are providing them with a high level of care. The second one is costs, and obviously, we believe we can show you this is incredibly affordable costs that we're providing so that we are using the public dollars as efficiently as we possibly can. And the last part, believe it or not, is compatibility in terms of working with our partners. CoreCivic has been an excellent partner through this. They have listened to every concern. They have provided a level of oversight and a level of audit that we've never had before. We can keep up on a daily basis with the complaints from our inmates at the CoreCivic facility. That's never happened before. So, I think we have a great story to tell you, and I'm going to let Jeff run through the presentation, and then we'll take any questions you have at the end. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Just a brief background, in July of, June of 2017, we entered into a five-year, I'm sorry, three-year contract with CoreCivic with options for two years' extension. We started operations July 1st of 2017, and we had our first extension last year that took us through this May. We're looking for an extension for, take us through May of 2022. All the offenders that are booked into CoreCivic are held by Mesa City Court on misdemeanors. All felonies go town to county. The first slide I'm showing you here is the cost, MCSO cost per diem rates, and it goes back to fiscal year 12, 13, and you can see exponentially keeps going up year after year. It started off, that first year of booking rate of $236, and now it's up to, this year's $442, just for the booking rate. And then, the housing rate was 60, or sorry, $85.91, and now it's $95.44 per day. The, that rate gets changed every year based on their costs at the county. This next slide here shows, on average per month, the number of inmates we booked in. So, you start back in 15, 16, prior to us going to CoreCivic. We were booking about 801 inmates in, every month into MCSO. And then, as it progresses through the year, you see when CoreCivic took over our booking of our misdemeanors, it was 331 for CoreCivic, 116 for MCSO. You saw a drop in the total number of inmates per month, and that has to do a lot with what the courts have done over the years. They instituted the community court, Veterans Court, and some other processes that, so we don't actually hold as many people in custody as we used to. This next slide here is the CoreCivic versus MCSO, the cost savings, cost per inmate, if we help people for seven days, 15 days, or 30 days, as determined by the courts. So, they have the MCSO's booking fee, the housing rate, that total cost for MCSO inmates, and then the same thing for CoreCivic. There is no booking fee for CoreCivic, so it's just the flat daily rate. And you can see for seven days of stay, it saves the city $628. All the way up to 30-day stay, it'll save up to $1,387. This is our monthly cost that we broke down from the same time period, 15, 16, all the way through 19, 20. Didn't include 2021 because our numbers are so down because of COVID, we didn't, it wouldn't show a fair comparison. So, you can see the cost per month with MCSO was about $510,000, and now we're down in 18, 19, 20, 19, 20, about $252,000 per month with the savings of, for the CoreCivic side, and then obviously, our MCSO costs dropped drastically.
Well, in fairness, you just told us that we're housing about half the number of inmates.
Yeah, 19 and 20, we, at the tail end of 20, of the fiscal year, we started seeing that drop. That's what the last little bit is there, but then 20, 21 fiscal year, we're not showing that on there because that was a drastic drop in our costs.
And you attribute that to COVID?
Yeah, we weren't booking nearly or holding as many people at all to the courts.
And ironically, Mayor, one of the questions was, we would actually save more money in comparison if we were booking more people. And if you remember, one of the concerns was bookings would go up, and so we're trying to show that that's not been our experience over the last five years.
There was a claim that if we viewed this vendor, that there was a perverse motivation to put more people in jail.
So, this is the estimated cost savings by our fiscal for 17, 18, when we first started with CoreCivic, all the way through. Now, you see the last year, 2021, projected cost savings only $500,000 because we didn't have as many people. That's exactly what Mr. Pombier was talking about. We didn't book nearly as many people. So, that's the cost side, and then the other side of the equation is the human relations, the human costs associated with having people in custody. We find this a great success utilizing CoreCivic. We actively manage our inmates every day. We're constant contact with the staff down there, so we are knowing if there's any complaints that are going on with our inmates, if there's any concerns, especially helpful during COVID when we had anybody that showed any signs or symptoms, we're on that every day. So, that active management allows us to stand on top of things so we don't lose track of anybody that's in custody and not take care of their needs. We have an administrative and onsite inspection, so every day, we do administrative inspections, which is the paperwork that comes back and forth, and we are checking that for whatever issues that get brought up, making sure that the inmates know their court dates, things like that. And then, we also do onsite inspections. We do two different types of onsite inspections. We either do a announced inspection or unannounced inspection, and I've been down there, and they're very accommodating. We walk the entire facility, walk, check the pods, check all the condition, their living conditions, and talk to every single inmate that's down there. We offer, at that time, we also offer them to do a survey of how their time in custody's been and any complaints they might have. The staff is very responsive to any issues that we bring up, and they immediately make corrections if we note something that they need to fix. The transportation services, I listed on here, we don't pay transportation costs for county, but we do have a transportation cost built in for CoreCivic. However, we would not have to do those, do those transportings ourselves down to county. So, we're saving from not transporting people constantly down to county, and they do pick up the people for us every morning and evening. One of the nice parts about that is that with their transportation services, if we have somebody that goes down in the morning, we need them back in the afternoon, they're right back on the next, on the next transport. And that's always the case when we were working with MCSO. It takes some time to get that process through, through paperwork. I've talked to Judge Tatts about the court, his experience with CoreCivic, and they're very, the courts are very pleased with their, with their responsive rate and how the inmates are treated down there. They gave us a high praise for our work with CoreCivic. This is just an example of one of the surveys that's completed. We just pulled one out of the pile so you guys can see it, and you can see the comments that are made, but these are the things that happen. We give these surveys out when we're down there on our inspections, and also, when they're leaving custody, they get the survey if they want to complete it and return it Some of the programs that they offer down at CoreCivic for the inmates, resume building, work programs, one of the more popular ones is self-paced anger management classes. All these services are available for them from the moment they step inside the facility. Most of the, most of the time, these, the inmates are down there for very short stays, so they don't get to participate in a lot of these programs, but they're all offered So, the work release program on here says is currently at MCSO, MCSO is actually not operating work release because of COVID, but we did decide, for a process improvement, we were trying to do work release ourselves with CoreCivic, and it just didn't work very well, so we worked, moved that back to MCSO several years ago. Under COVID-19, one of the huge successes we have, we've seen is the process improvement with getting people through quarantine protocols. They have onsite medical, and we've had, had to quarantine the pods when somebody comes in, they don't feel well, and they have display symptoms, and then that person gets immediate medical attention. And they've also run extra transports for us, so we don't have to have as many people in a transport van to limit the exposure of other inmates during the COVID experience. Then we also, last year, we had a city auditor did a report for us, audited the CoreCivic contract, and then two things they noted in there on successes were the financial impact, so everything we were stating, we realized they actually noted in their audit, and then the efficiency impact. That's what I was talking about, the fact that we can have people come back and forth as quick as we can limits the delay in somebody staying in custody.
Before we move on, under work release, did you indicate that if an inmate wants to do work release, that's not available through CoreCivic? They would have to be incarcerated at the county, but the county's not doing that right now because of COVID, or did I misunderstand?
That's correct. We actually were doing it for a while, but because the times of the transport could vary so much, so their work release could be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, could be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Because of the transporting issues, we found that it was more efficient to run them all through MCSO that does that on a daily basis for everyone. So, if they wanted work release and were assigned work release, we send them to MCSO. If they do not, and they want to serve their time straight, they go to CoreCivic, and we make that an option of the inmate.
All right. Thank you.
But right now?
Right now, right now, there's no option at all for work release.
Because the county's not operating a program with COVID restrictions? Okay. Thank you.
There were three recommendations that came out of the city audit. They wanted to see a more detailed inspections procedures, so we revamped our inspections and rewrote the form that we use to get more detailed information onto it. They wanted also a structured process for documenting how we resolve the issues, what we do with our documentation, and we completed those. The first one, we completed July of last year, and the second one, we actually completed prior to the audit being finished, which was January of last year. And then, the documented resolution of the survey concerns, so how do we solve the problem that was noted in the, in the survey? And so, we do keep all that information now, and we completed that last July also. So, our bottom line for the Mesa Police Department is that the CoreCivic contract's been a huge success for us. Since fiscal year 17, 18, we've realized $4.5 million in savings. The inmate experience has been better, actively managing our inmates each day, and also, the process improvement in documentation has greatly increased through the audit and just our noting of things we want to keep track of. And in collaboration, we have near CRT, mental health, municipal courts, and MCSO. We recognize that some inmates need some extra attention for mental health issues, and we have a collaboration with CoreCivic. Our CRT process are involved in that too, so if we need to get them services rather than incarceration, we can work on those with the courts. With that, I'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Jeff and John. Did you say the contract is only, we're signing it only for a year? Is that correct?
It was a five-year contract. This is a one-year extension. Next year, we'll have to bring back a new contract.
And so, you have to come back to council and...
We'll have to come back within a year to bring back a whole new contract.
And just do it all at once?
We would love to, but it requires an RFP process.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I would love to.
Yeah, don't tempt him.
All right. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Heredia.
On the RFP, are we talking to the county, are we going to talk to the county and see what, I know at the beginning of this contract, it was Penzone's, I think, sure, our pile was still on, and so, Penzone maybe realizes, realized some change there, and are we talking to the county on what that looks like if we were as an option?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, we actively talked to the county sheriff's office. Obviously, we still use them for some of our misdemeanors and our felonies. We will continue to meet with them, and as we begin to roll out this RFP process, my commitment to you is myself and Chief Cost will sit down with Paul Penzone to make sure we can see what they can do and what they can't do to see if they even can, if they're even interested in doing something like that at this type of level.
But Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, just so you know, it's usually, I mean, I get the notices still, it's a stated rate that comes to, from the county to all the cities. So, we could have the conversation, I suspect that we'll get the same rate that every other city does. There's not a volume discount. They actually prefer, I do so.
And the other question, two questions on, has the rate changed as far as inmate rate throughout the four years that we've been on the, with this proposal?
You mean the flat daily rate from CoreCivic?
Has that changed or fluctuated?
It has not fluctuated up until the recent year. With this extension, they've requested, I believe, a 2% increase in the daily rate, which is their first request, and I plan on signing off on that.
And then, Commander, you mentioned we're paying for transportation. What's that cost that we pay?
We pay, CoreCivic, $35,000 a month for transportation services.
And Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, we do not include that in the cost because it lessens the number of trips we have to take to the county, so we don't need as many detention officers driving down, we don't need the vans driving down, we also don't have to pay for the liability if anything happens with those vans. We've had inmate vans crash before. So, we believe that we probably even make some savings on that side, but we've just left it as a flat line because we didn't want to run into all those personnel costs versus the monthly cost, and that has not changed in the entire time.
But we're still taking misdemeanors to county, right?
Correct. It's just at a much smaller volume than we used to. So, fewer transports, fewer officers needed to make those transports.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I have a question about, what is the average jail time at CoreCivic for the misdemeanors?
I believe we've run the numbers in our averages somewhere between seven and 10 days.
Seven to 10 days?
Correct.
And is that about the same or less than if it was in the county previously with the misdemeanors or?
I don't have those numbers with me from previous.
But that would be, that's really determined by the courts.
The judge.
Not necessarily the, where we take them.
Okay, so the turnaround time is not comparable?
The only thing I remember from Matt was that he, when sometimes, when they were trying to get a inmate back, sometimes it might take an extra day from the county. It's just so expansive, and they could be spread out. I think the advantage here is they're all in one pod, so they know where the Mesa inmates are. That's what I remember, so.
And there's two different lengths of stays, is important. There's pre-incarcer, there's pre-conviction and post-conviction. Our post-conviction stay is much shorter with CoreCivic anecdotally because we can bring them back so much quicker. So, we are very, if Judge DeFoe was here, that was one of the reasons he was so excited about CoreCivic, is he could literally bring back someone on the same day, if not the very next day. That was very difficult with the county. Sometimes, it took those seven days just to get them back because they could be at one of three facilities, and what they do is they call out their name. If they didn't respond, they didn't make the van, and they didn't come in. So, then we had to send it the next day for them. So, it's become a much cleaner process with CoreCivic because they're all our inmates, and it's a much smaller population.
Great. Thank you. Well, it sounds like the CoreCivic has been working out for us and supportive of the extension for a year, and look forward to an RFP so we can look at other alternatives comparatively and next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
David, did you want me to say something?
I know. I know you have a comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I've been down to the facility in Florence, and I'm really impressed there as I, when we first considered this contract. CoreCivic was all about not necessarily cost savings, but protecting the inmates and the people that we send down to Florence. And so, what I, what I really appreciated was the whole package they could provide for an inmate, the social services, the food, the housing, the medical, and the, the things that people need in there, even though you're an inmate, to probably regain some part of society back in their life. And then, what I really liked also was the ability of our officers to remain, you know, other than booking an inmate at our county jail, they would then go back into the field on patrol. So, we weren't sending officers to Phoenix as often, and I should say, or detention officers and everybody, and reduced our liability, and I find that this was really a great program. What I didn't hear, was there any, have you been doing video conferencing for any of these type of, between city courts and Florence?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we have that option available for them. It's in our lobby that they can do video conferencing. I can't give you the number of times it's been used, but it is available for family members and attorneys if they need to talk to their client.
Yeah, I know that was a concern initially, was how can I be in contact with my friend, my loved one, or et cetera, and so I'm glad that that's still available. So, yeah, I still appreciate this program as well as the cost-saving component of it, making us as a city more efficient. Have any other cities looked into what we've been doing? I'm just, yes or no, Mr. Pombier?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments? I have toured the facility, as well as the county facility as well, and I'll be supporting this, and I guess we'll leave it on the consent agenda with the permission of council. Mr. Thompson, you have anything you'd like to share? Okay. Great. Well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to delving into this a little deeper a year from now when we see the results of the RFP. Council, any other questions regarding our agenda for tonight's meeting? I know currently, the only matter off the agenda is the zoning case that we've been working on the last few meetings, but I know we had a lengthy meeting on Thursday where we got several staff presentations on agenda items, but is there anything, any additional questions since then? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2 for this meeting. That's to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on a few different department budgets. We'll begin, Mr. Brady, would you want to begin with Transit Services?
Yes, I do.
Jody, nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Sorry about that. I'm Jody Sorel. I'm the Transit Services Director, and just here to give you a brief overview of our fiscal year 21, 22 budget. But before we do, I want to kind of give some, talk about the federal stimulus money because that really does have an impact on our budgets. So, with coronavirus, there's been three federal packages that have had funding for transit in them, and it's important to note that this money is different and separate from the money that the city has received. So, the, each packages have had a total of almost $70 billion to offset transit costs nationwide. In Mesa, we, we had, we got $11.9 million, so just under $12 million to offset our fiscal year 21 budget. In fiscal, for fiscal year 22, the CHRISA Act, which was signed in December, reduces our budget by $5.1 million. And the American Rescue Plan, which was passed in March, we're still waiting. MAG is going through their internal process to calculate all that distribution, that money out that comes to our region. It's about $208 million. And then, after they go through their process in May, then the Valley Metro, at the Valley Metro level, the city managers and the board will have some discussion on how and when that money is allocated out. But on top of the 17 million, I also want to note that about 70% of our bus service is funded by Prop 400, and that's money that never comes to us in a, in any way, shape, or form, and we've gotten another eight and a half million dollars to offset that transit service as well. So, we've done pretty nicely with the federal stimulus money. So, you can see fiscal year 19 and 20 actuals, that's the last full year before COVID. You can see on the fiscal year 20, 21 current budget, how the significance it had in reducing the amount of budget that we had, that we have to pay toward our services. And then, on fiscal year 21, 22, you can see the CHRISA money has reduced it, reduced it again. And just a reminder, the American Rescue Plan money has not been calculated and does not show up in here. Most of our budget is Valley Metro contracted services. So, this, we want, we always like to show you how that balances out. So, Prop 400 is a big, it's a vital funding source for us. It's about 40% of our budget, and you can see how it breaks out between our accessible transit programs and our fixed route service. And then, the CHRISA money is about another 20% of this year's, offsets another 20% of the budget, so that the, what Mesa's responsible for is about $15.2 million of our contracted This is, so, getting into some of the budget discussion for fiscal year 22, over the last couple of years, we've made a lot of decisions to make our paratransit program and our ride choice program more efficient, and you can see on this chart, just, just as COVID was hitting, we were getting close to providing more ride choice trips per month than paratransit trips. And then, things bottomed out with COVID, but as the recovery comes back, you can see many more, the ride choice trips are far outpacing the paratransit trips. And that's a good thing for us because we can provide about two and a half ride choice trips for every one paratransit trip and a cost perspective. So, when we, when we made the change to realign our paratransit service area, we really beefed up our ride choice program, and what's offered, the option that's offered citywide is our residents who are ADA certified can take up to 58-mile trips a month. We have just under 500 people that actively participate in that, and you can see their average trips and average miles per month, it's, it's pretty average, it's about eight miles, and the cost per trip is just over $17 a trip. When we did that realignment of our paratransit service areas, one of our residents came up with a, asked for a different option, if we would consider a different option. And so, we looked at a mileage-based program where instead of 58-mile trips a month, they would get 400 miles a month, because if you're living outside the service area, your trips are a little further, and we didn't want to force our residents to have to make transfers because this demographic is kind of our more vulnerable population. So, we did a pilot with that. We did, we have 36 active riders taking 163 miles a month. The average trip is 11 miles. We surveyed these, these riders to see kind of like where they're at, what issues they have, and they really liked the mileage program. Most of them are taking it to get to some form of medical appointment, whether it's a doctor or a treatment, and then there's the ones that take it to work and education, and then there's the shopping options. But the mileage-based program accounts for about 12% of our budget, so when you do a blended cost, it's about $17.35 a trip for the whole ride choice program. What we'd like to do is offer the mileage-based option citywide. When we first did this, we were a little, we didn't know what we were getting into, and we didn't want to overcommit, but with COVID and the stimulus money, we really have an opportunity to try to introduce this citywide with, at a very low risk to the city. So, starting July 1, we'll start offering the mileage-based program citywide. As for our budget enhancements, the, we have about 400 bus stops that are unsheltered. We have little, about 800, little under 800 bus stops total in the city, and about 400 of them have no shade options whatsoever. of them have no shade options whatsoever. So we'd like to go through, bring somebody in to go through and help us, because we're very small staff, go through and really help us reevaluate the stops for, for shade options. And not everybody, not every shelter needs a, needs a, needs a shade canopy structure. In District 1, just this, earlier this year, we moved a bus stop, one of Councilmember Freeman's constituents asked us to move a bus stop, and we moved a bus stop from one side of an intersection to another. We were able to utilize the surrounding landscaping to provide some cooling shelter, some cooling for the, the bench. And then the building, the actual building will provide shade later in the day when the, when the sun goes behind the building. So there's options like using landscaping and neighboring buildings to provide shade so we don't have to put a structure at every one. But we do have places, like in the pictures, where we have a wall right behind the bench and we can't get a shelter in, or we have parking right behind there and we can't. It, it's hard to get a business to be able to give up their parking for, for a bus shelter. So we want to have somebody help work with us to define, to define some shade options that might be more of a, like a canopy type structure that we could, very low profile on the sidewalk that we could install to provide shade for our bus stops as well as still keep them ADA accessible. And then we want to construct and install 10 or 15 of these, 10 or 12 of these in the city to, to kind of get them to roll out. And I should back up because we did earlier, last year, when we were taking, to take advantage of the CARES Act money, we are installing 10 additional shelters using funding from those savings to install 10 additional shelters, and those will be installed over the next coming months. You'll start seeing those up. I think it was like November-ish. Yeah. And then we are asking for some service enhancements. These routes to enhance the service, these are routes that have had, over the last 15 to 20 years, they've just been death by a thousand cuts of cutting a little bit here, a little bit there. And so we want to rethink and look at adding some of this service. You may remember in November, I was here with Darren Lozano from Valley Metro talking about the Tempe-Mesa Streetcar Study and the Fiesta District AA. And one of the, one, some of the recommendations from those studies, that's recommended adding bus service. So, and Route 45 Broadway Road was one of those routes. So what we're recommending is, is on all three of these instances, is increasing our weekend service. Weekend service in Mesa's always been a struggle because we really don't have a lot of it. So we're, we're asking for money to increase frequency on Saturdays from 60 minutes to 30 minutes on all three of these routes, and then increase, just add Sunday service frequency overall and add that 30-minute frequency on Sundays because we have very limited bus service on Sundays in general in the city. And then for weekday service on the 20 and 28, 128, which is Mesa Drive and Stapley, is to increase weekday service from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as opposed from the 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so that people can actually get to work and get home from work when they're, when, as things start to reopen up. And this is a good time to add that service as things start to open up and people start looking for ways to, to get back to work. So this is how those requests break out. This is a little different because we're asking to spread it out over four fiscal years in some cases. We're following, Valley Metro has a performance, transit standards and performance measures policy. And in that, in that program, it's, it takes about three years to develop your bus ridership. So that's why you'll see it spread out over multiple fiscal years. Also, that has to do with Valley Metro only makes changes to their bus service in October and April. So what we may, our fiscal year starts in July 1, it may lag a couple of months here or there. So that's why that drags out. And then the 45 is really only for two fiscal years because we're hoping, right now in the short-range transit plan, we plan to transition Broadway Road from being locally funded to being regionally funded in fiscal year '24. So that will take everything off of the, the local fund requirement. And then finally, just looking forward to fiscal year '23, one of the other recommendations from the, the Fiesta District Alterance Analysis and the Streetcar Study was to looking at a pilot through the Fiesta District. So we're going to, this fall, we're, and it, there's a lot of work, little work pre, ahead of time that has to go into developing this. We're going to work with the community, Banner Hospital, MCC, the surrounding neighborhoods and businesses to develop a route. And we're hoping to start that route, or we have a tentative start date of right around when MCC starts school in the fall of 2022. So that, that concludes the budget, my budget presentation, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jody. Counsel, questions for Ms. Sorel, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor Sorel. The bus stop on page, slide nine, the bus stop shade program, there's no more allocations for shelters or shade for '23, '24, or five, or that's forthcoming?
That's forthcoming. We wanted to kind of get through, see what we were working with, and then come back and we'll probably ask for something every year. But we just, we don't know what that is because we want to see how much it costs, what, what we design and how much it costs to project, to develop that.
So you're in process to design some different shade structures?
That's, that's, that's the goal. We haven't started that yet. We're in the process of putting in 10 additional shelters from, from last year's budget. But we haven't started that yet with the, this program.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel member Spillsbury?
Does the ride choice program cover the entire city, or are there parts that it doesn't cover?
No, the ride choice program covers the entire city. So right now, anybody in the city can take the 58-mile trips a month, but only if you live outside of our paratransit service area can you take the mileage option. So what we want to do is add that mileage option citywide as well.
So someone was telling me that they live at Signal View in Maine and that they don't have access to ride choice, but they would.
They would.
Okay.
They do.
So something else, Signal View in Maine?
They do.
Is that, okay. I'll follow up with her.
I don't know.
Unless, well, if they live, if they live in a county island, they would still have access through the county, but it might be a slightly different program.
Because I'm thinking that far out of Maine, you may be in a county island.
Yeah, you can, they can call my office and, and we'll help, help them figure out where they, where they are.
But you should be covered if you live in Maine. Okay, okay, great.
Well, we, we restricted a, was it the paratransit program that we restricted the boundaries on?
We did. We restricted paratransit to within, to the federal minimum requirement, which is three quarters miles of a bus stop or light rail station. So that took, that eliminated service in a lot of the, kind of the north, north Mesa, east, and kind of some southeast areas. But that's why we really beefed up the ride choice program for that. But also those areas do have, there's a lot of county islands in those areas. And the county also made that same change at the same time. But I do know the county has a very robust ride choice program too.
So I wonder if that person is, we're talking about paratransit, but the answer is have them talk to Jody and she'll figure it out.
We'll fix it.
Mr. Freeman, then Mr. Ridda. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman. These aren't clear.
It's the reflection off the.
Thank you, Jody. Are you going to revisit some, some services that were, were curtailed? For example, the power to Mason Community College, the Red Mountain area, as you move forward, or have you had any requests?
We have not had any requests to, to take service back there. I mean, we're, we're always open to looking at what we, where we can serve things, as long as, we do have to kind of follow the Valley Metro standards and that. But as ridership seems to grow, I mean, if, we, we could do surveys and stuff to see if there's an interest, but we haven't been asked to do anything.
You know, I, I do like that buzz concept between downtown to, you know, Mason Community College and the Fiesta District. Maybe eventually that's something we could look.
Sure.
Thank you, Frankie.
Yeah, the question on the mileage-based pilot program, is that, do we anticipate having folks that use paratransit to be outreach to, to receive this program? Or how's the, the program, how are we going to facilitate the program to let people know about this option?
We're going to work with Valley Metro to let them know. We may send out a postcard, we may do some calling to some people. There's, that community has a, learns about things very quickly. And there's already an interest in people in taking it and using the mileage option because it, if you're traveling, like for example, if you're traveling into like Ability 360, it's easier and quicker to take ride choice because you can just call an Uber. It's essentially calling an Uber to come pick you up instead of scheduling 24 hours in advance, and you have this pickup window. And then you have to, you know, possibly share your trip and stuff. So there's a lot of people that are interested in taking it for those longer trips, and you know, that's good for us because that, a paratransit trip, like I said, is about $50 a trip, so.
What's the anticipated start time for, for that pilot?
We would start that with the fiscal year on July 1.
This, July 1?
This is July 1.
And then, did you mention as far as shade, we do have the option of looking at, if, if possible, for adding trees or other types of shade concepts?
Yeah, so, so not always a hard structure is, is the right or best answer. And so, yeah, that's what we want to do is look at if, if a tree might be a better option in cooling into that environment as opposed to like a metal structure. So that's part of what that evaluation will entail.
Perfect. And definitely, just a comment on the last, the Fiesta Bus Pilot, I'm really excited about this opportunity and, and seeing how, you know, we can infuse the Asian District, you know, ongoing activity there and MCC, of course, Banner. Do we have a potential route or just?
Well, that's part of.
Conversations?
We're gonna. Put together maybe, we're going to look at the outreach part of that, and it may look at like two or three different routes and having people comment. Sometimes that's easier for people to give feedback to than tell us where you want to go.
Sure.
Type of thing. So we'll do something like that and work with that electronically so that their residents or their, their students or their employees can give us that feedback.
Perfect.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Jody. Along that same subject of the Fiesta Buzz Pilot, where does this fall on the budget? Or is it planned on the budget?
It's not in the, it's not in the fiscal year '22 budget. This was just a look ahead to fiscal year '23 because there, there's going to be some upfront investment that goes into that before we come back to you, to, to fund it. There would, no matter when we came to, to have the discussion, there would probably be a year lag in putting stuff together to be able to operate it.
Right, so on the previous slide on the schedule, it's not inserted there?
No.
Okay. And I assume there would also be some offset for a bus route that covers that area now? Or it would be in addition?
We had looked that to make sure like we're not, to see how that works with the, because we already have routes on Dobson, Southern, and Country Club. So look at, and Alma School. So to look at how we can do that, so we aren't maybe necessarily running duplicative service over that. Because it's hard to, it's, it's, it's next to impossible to say we're going to, if we're going to run a buzz down Southern from, from Dobson to Alma School to not run the 61, the Main Street bus down there to, to offset that savings. Because whoops, that's a route that goes straight through, all the way through. So that's why we would probably look at some ways that it circles through the neighborhood as opposed to just does one of those.
Right, thank you.
Counsel member Spillsbury?
Just a quick question. When you talked about the shade structures and getting outside help on that, or are you talking about outside, outside, or our City of Mesa Engineering Department? I know there's great people there.
Outside, outside.
Oh, outside. So have we, have we asked our own engineering department to help with that, or do they have enough going on?
I haven't talked to, to Beth yet, but she's sitting in the third row back there.
Yeah, I know. And maybe she's like, stop talking, but I know there's great people that could help. Is that not what we do?
We, we probably, Beth is very busy right now. We don't need to, we don't need to pull her off of major infrastructure projects right now. And we need someone, there's some really good firms out there that have done a lot with transit. The, the challenge we have with shade in a lot of cases is, as Gillie was trying to, I think, depict, it's just the space, right? It's just the, we don't have a lot of space in that right-of-way to get the canopies up or whatever, or the typical shade structures. So I think we're trying to look for non.
Non-traditional.
Non-traditional, whatever, what we currently use. And so maybe, you know, maybe there's something like a canopy or a umbrella-like thing or something. So we've got to come up with something. And you can imagine with what, 400 shade?
400, yeah.
There are going to be a variety of different solutions. So we just need someone who can spend the time going through and looking at those. And maybe what we should do too, councils, you know, we don't want to overanalyze everything. We're doing the 10 to 12. We need to find a way to get 10 or 12 kind of in the hopper right behind those to keep moving. You know, I get it, we need to study, but there's probably some others we can keep identifying. I think the 10 to 12 came from your critical analysis of those that were available with right-of-way.
Right.
We kind of picked off the low-hanging fruit first. Now we're kind of getting to the more.
Now we have the more right-of-way challenge.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at now.
All right, thank you, counsel. Any additional questions on this item?
I had some, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Jody, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask during budget season, are we looking again at bringing any bus service into District 6 at all?
Not, not at this point in the, in the, in what we have, the only service we have planned for District 6 right now is what exists, and that's on the Power Road corridor. So we don't have any.
Because we're, we can't, we continue to add more and more population-wise, but we're not serving them with Valley Metro. Makes it kind of difficult for people to get around sometimes.
I would agree.
I think we all agree. So, Jody, what's, what's it going to take for that to happen?
Money?
Lots more money. Those are big routes, and those come from long distances, and we're trying to keep up with the routes we have right now. You can see the frequencies, I mean, we would argue that some of our highest routes still need more frequencies than weekends.
Right.
So we're trying to take care of what we have. Afraid we add more, then it affects the routes we have, and, you know, part of this could be addressed in a future Prop 400 enhancement or extension possibly.
Possibly.
These become very expensive to maintain over a period of time, and it's a direct impact to general funds. So it competes against all the other priorities that we have in the budget. So we try to allocate significant amounts more here as a acknowledgement of the savings that we're receiving, but those are one-time savings. So ultimately, we will be picking these up in the operations budget.
Is there any way to estimate what the demand is? Because most of these neighborhoods are brand-new homes. It seems like most of the people who live there have, have transportation options. But so I'm just curious to know, is there any way of doing some sort of needs assessment? It would be a shame to spend a lot of money on a bus route and then nobody uses it.
Right, yeah, there's, so again, going back to the transit standards and performance measures, there's some formulas, Valley Metro has some evaluations that they look at to see if a route would be successful or not, depending on things like zero car households. And some of it goes into how the community has developed. There's a lot of, there's a lot of communities that, in the newer parts of town that have walls around them, which doesn't, and doesn't make it exactly necessarily transit-friendly to be able to walk out to, to pick up the bus stop if you have to walk through a neighborhood to get out to the main thing and the main entrance and then walk, you know, a couple blocks either way. So there's, there's some of those things, and we can gladly easily, you know, work with Valley Metro to do some of those evaluations along there on some of the corridors to see if they would be potential candidates for a fixed route. And sometimes in some areas, you know, a fixed route isn't, isn't the answer. It might be a circulator. It might be some other new thing like a microtransit option. So that, and those are things that also, we will also look at in the Transit Master Plan update when we do it in the next, in the next year.
Now, we do invest in park-and-rides.
We do have park-and-rides.
So that's where our demand is. It's very, it's not as much about the circulators as it is about the long-distance hauls to get into the employment centers. So that's, I mean, that's where our centers are.
Right.
So the park-and-ride would anchor a, a express?
Right. But like our, Superstition Springs Park-and-Ride, it's a park-and-ride and transit center. It has one express route, and I think it's five or six local buses that go into there. So that's like a major hub for us in that area. And a lot of people will drive to there and, and pick up a bus from there.
Well, it sounds like a lot will go into the, we say we're doing a Transit Master Plan this next year.
As part of the, the general plan work that will be happening in the next couple of years, we'll do the, the Transit Update as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Thompson, any other questions from your end?
No, I, you know, I think a circular. No, you know, I think a circular, circular would be really good out in the district, you know, something that would, that could pick up around East Mark, Cadence area and then, you know, up Signal Butte. So something that would go down Ray Road up to Signal Butte, you know, up to Baseline and then maybe across to the mall or something of that nature. Just a circular to move people so they don't have to drive so much. So just thoughts, since it's budget season, like I said, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask.
All right. Thank you, council. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Jody. Next, transportation.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. With me tonight, on my left is Orlando Otero is our Deputy Director for Field Operations and to my right, Eric Goodarian, Deputy Director for Traffic Engineering. So we will jump right in. We'll talk about our financials, a few key performance measures, take a look at some successes we've had and what we're looking at going forward. So please jump in if you have questions. Starting with revenues for the current fiscal year, we do have a number of revenue sources. I wanted to highlight some of the larger. At the bottom, the blue part of the pie chart is the Local Streets Fund. This is a three-tenths of a cent sales tax that is dedicated to street maintenance here in Mesa that accounts for just under 50% of our operating revenues. And then, of course, we also rely heavily on highway user revenue dollars that are shared with cities across the state. A little later in the presentation, Eric will talk about how we're using photo safety money for safety-related transportation projects as well. I know there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but this actually paints a really good picture. So if we step back a year ago, you know, when the pandemic first began, we weren't sure what our revenues were going to look like, you know, not just within transportation but across the city. So we were actually digging in that, you know, if sales taxes plummeted or HERF dollars, you know, really took a dive, you know, we were going to, you know, what cuts might we have to make. The great news is, I'm sure you're aware, sales taxes went up and HERF dollars didn't go down as much as MAG and ADOT originally projected. So this puts us in a strong position financially. So in addition to the operating dollars you saw on the first slide, we also use local street taxes and HERF funds to augment our capital program. So where you see the line that says project cost, you can see that we're using a significant amount of these dollars in addition to the Mesa Moves Bond that was recently passed and also the money that comes back from Prop 400 for reimbursement. So it really gives us the ability to fund a number of projects. The last line I wanted to mention briefly, the city currently pays just over $12 million a year on some HERF bonds. Those actually will be paid off in fiscal year '25, '26. So that'll free up another $12 million annually that could potentially be used to enhance or keep up with our transportation infrastructure. So you'll see that ending fund balance and we'll get to a slide a little down the road here where we have some ideas of how we'd like to increase some of our maintenance activities.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
RJ, before we leave this slide-
Yes.
On your ending fund balance-
Yes.
Do you have a percentage, or these are in dollars, but a target figure that you try to maintain?
We don't have a target figure. Actually, the revenues are doing better than we anticipate and that's why these numbers went up. A few years ago, we were being more conservative in our revenue projection and so the numbers weren't nearly this much. This really does give us an opportunity, I think, to invest some of this money back into the community.
We would look at this like utility because it's standalone and because it's depended pretty much on one source of funding. So as a result, that would probably be a 20%, 20%, 25% reserve is what we'd look at. So you can still, it's still a very healthy fund balance. But again, these are mostly, well, there's operations side on pavement management, but there's a lot of project costs that hit this budget also. So you could spend that in a couple of years if you needed to.
We'll talk about a couple of our key performance measures and I'm going to let Orlando talk about streetlights, which is very important. You see red here, which would actually look like we're off our target, but it's actually a success story with what our staff have been able to do. So Orlando.
Okay, as you know, streetlights are essential to public and motorist safety. Our goal is to repair all service requests within five days of notification. We average about 1,300 service requests a quarter and about 5,000 requests a year. So over these last few periods, we have not met our performance target as RJ mentioned. However, we are responding within six days, which is still below the industry standard of 10 days. Over the last eight months, we were down about 50% of our streetlight staff. So that really affected our ability to go out there and make these repairs. I can't say it's for COVID, you know, it's just some people decided to move on, some employees decided to move on. In the last few weeks, we have extended some job offers though to three employees. So hopefully when we get those, a full staff, we're confident that we will exceed our performance metric of five days after notification.
So this is, I just wanted to commend our streetlight staff that they were literally down, you know, half our crew, you know, and they stayed within one day of the performance measure for repairs. And we are still on target with our LED conversion as well.
Right. So I'm going to go into our LED conversion. So our target is to convert 1,175 fixtures per quarter to LED to meet our seven-year conversion plan. Currently, we are exceeding the target and converted over 1,200 this last quarter. We have 47,000 streetlights that were responsible for throughout the City of Mesa and over 16,000 lights have already been converted to LED. But I want you guys to know, take note that every time we repair a streetlight, we're converting it as well to an LED. So that's positively affecting our conversion numbers. Okay? So like RJ mentioned, I do want to take an opportunity to, to recognize our streetlight crew. I mean, they've been working, you know, just with capacity and I think they've been doing a remarkable, remarkable job maintaining our streetlight system.
Thank you. Now we'll talk a little bit about our debris pickup program.
Okay, so our debris pickup program. We haven't developed a performance metric quite yet. We're still collecting data. So in February of 2020, we hit the ground running. We borrowed a rear loader from Solid Waste that was turned in for surplus and we started cleaning alleys. We also had homeless camp cleanups as well. So we cleaned over 700 alleys and over 17 homeless camp encampments. So during this time, we also responded to numerous service requests and scheduled bi-weekly cleanups. So we have about 102 miles of alleys throughout the city and we anticipate that we'll, we'll complete all these alleys within the next few months. And then we'll take that data and we'll come back with a performance metric to track response time. So when a customer does call in, our response time to get to that location and clean up the debris as well as linear foot of alleys that we're cleaning on a per-quarter basis.
The feedback from the community has been very positive. I don't know if you've all heard, you know, from the folks, but where we have alleys, it's been, it's been received extremely well that we're, that we're getting in there every day.
Councilmember Spillsbury.
Do you have any data on how often you have to re-clean the same alleys or is it-
That's what we're working on right now, what that measure is because I included in a city manager's update a while back some photos and it was amazing. And I think every part of the city is different, but there was an area within 10 months that was just as bad as it was, you know, when we were through there the first time. So that's what we're really trying to figure out.
Is that, is it neighbors throwing stuff over the wall? Is it homeless people? Is it teenagers playing in the alley?
It's a combination of there are, there are homeless issues in our alleys, but unfortunately, it's some residents that-
Chuck stuff over the wall?
They are.
Oh, okay. So it probably is the neighbors-
Yeah.
Using it as a garbage.
In on every alley to try, with the idea of trying to keep people who didn't live in the area from coming in and dumping.
Okay.
So the gates are blocked.
Correct.
And we're still having dumping, so.
So is there any kind of effort going on to contact those houses that back the alleys to tell them it's not okay? I'm sure you've never thought of this.
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, we've had a lot of conversations with our code enforcement staff and the challenge is, I joke that short of someone stapling a utility bill to the old mattress that's in the alley, it's kind of hard to figure out who it belongs to. So, you know, if they can attribute, you know, with some evidence, they will take an enforcement action. I think the gate program has worked very well from the perception of public safety, but it's, it's just something we're going to need to take on forever, I think, you know, and continue that maintenance.
We could start charging for the service and that might get people's attention. But we kind of need to go through this cycle and say, if you have an alley, we have to come in there every quarter, we start adding some new utility bill. So we need to get in the cycle of doing it first.
Do we need the alleys for anything anymore?
There's utilities still?
Oh, there are still utilities in the alleys. Okay.
It'd be difficult to try to abandon all the alleys. It can be done in isolated cases, but I think that'd be a pretty big, a lot to take on because some of the residents might not want the alley.
They won't go and take it.
Real quickly, I know you've got a lot on your agenda. Again, Mesa Moves, we're moving forward. Thank you for your support for $100 million. That'll return 162 million total projects to the city. Eric will talk about how we're using photo safety dollars that come through that program. We touched on LED conversions. I want to thank council. We've also been able to do more in-house pavement maintenance work through some equipment purchases that we've made that allow us to be more efficient in those day-to-day activities. Eric, photo safety.
So I just want to highlight, this is the first year that we've had, we had $1.3 million of photo safety enforcement money that came specifically for projects. And just want to highlight that we're really looking with this money to looking at vulnerable users. Our focus this year has been around schools and a few other locations where we've added sidewalk to existing arterials that didn't have it. Those are, those purple dots. Also, we are, we're in the process of upgrading our software for all of our school zone flashers that we have within the city so we can talk to them and be much more efficient to be able to turn them on and off when, when needed. I also want to highlight, we've added some driver speed feedback signs. We're using this money for that. And we are in the middle of a study, a traffic calming study. We have many streets within the City of Mesa that don't necessarily qualify for, for speed humps, whether they have too high of a speed limit. The neighborhoods haven't been able to get the support for that. Now that we have this, this photo safety enforcement money, we're, we're looking at, that's what these blue lines are, these streets throughout the city. We're doing a study and we've hired a consultant to help us with different ideas for traffic calming on those. And we'll be looking to, we'll be getting those results by the end of the fiscal year and looking to program some of those streets with this money in upcoming years.
Budget adjustments be our proposing for the next fiscal year?
Excuse me, RJ, I think the Vice Mayor has a question.
Thank you for taking on this traffic calming study. So these areas that you chose, were they strategically, you know, is there different, there's challenges there, I assume, with-
Vice Mayor, there are, these were streets that we, historically, we've received quite a few speeding complaints and for one reason or another, speed humps haven't, haven't been a solution for them. And so, yeah, we've had the historical data. We went back and chose 10 locations throughout the city.
Great. And when did you say the study was going to be complete?
We should have the study completed by the end of the fiscal year, so by June.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward, it's time to update our long-range transportation plan. The city's general plan will be coming a few years down the road and we usually get out ahead of that with updating our long-range plan. We are also proposing to share a new traffic analyst with the Mesa Police Department that'll work actually at both locations to analyze data related to our photo safety program and look for opportunities where we can collaborate again on traffic safety projects. And then lastly, given the financial status of our operating funds, we're proposing to increase our pavement overlays from 8 million to 10 million and then our day-to-day maintenance from 8 to 10 million also. So a total of $4 million increase in pavement preservation throughout the city. This is just a photo. We've showed some, you've seen this before. This just gives you a picture of what the different types of maintenance activities we do, what the sort of the before and after is and why this maintenance is so critical in maintaining our infrastructure. And those are just some numbers on the left that give you a sense of how much work we can do at the different funding levels. Questions?
Thank you. Mr. Reddy.
On the streetlight repairs, how long does it take to initiate the, when you start in the fix, how long does it take to fix it as far as?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, our goal is five days for a repair. Sometimes there could be a power issue with SRP, for example, that might make that longer, but it is a very high priority for us to get out there. The people, and I know I've had this conversation with Councilmember Luna, streetlights are kind of a love them or hate them proposition and, you know, but where we've been doing the upgrades, as Orlando mentioned, you know, we're not really doing much repair on our existing streetlights. We're just converting them. People are asking when the rest of the neighborhood is going to get done, you know, because the lighting is very important to them. So it's something that's a very high priority for us.
And then on the LED conversions, how many do we have left throughout the city?
Let's go back.
Did you say?
So we have about 30,000 lights left yet to convert. So it's a seven-year program overall that we started last year. So again, we're slightly ahead of our target right now, but when we proposed the, the streetlight master plan to council, we were able to realize a savings of millions by just building into our workforce. And rather than using a contractor and doing a one-time multimillion-dollar program, we just start, you know, using our existing staff and upgrading them over seven years.
And then on the pavement, the last question, pavement preservation, were you conducting a study on like different types of coatings or is that something that you've looked into?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, we have, under Orlando's team is that we have a pavement management supervisor and a pavement management team. They're always looking at different products, you know, that are out there. Different applications work better in some situations, you know, over, you know, over others, but we're always seeing what's out there.
Has any of them resulted into promising like safety and efficient costs?
No, I think just generally it's just day-to-day basic maintenance, you know, and again, you know, I could bring our pavement management supervisor, he could talk your ear off for an hour, you know, about how he chooses which application to use depending on the condition of the roadway and what traffic conditions are because some are more expensive than others. So we're going to use some applications on higher traffic areas like arterials, which is going to be different than what we might use in a neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you. Council, other questions for RJ? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, RJ, and staff for being responsive to the driver feedback signs, you know, in some of D1's area. I know that they were installed within like 10, 15 days and that, that really got their attention and mine as well because I came around a curve and I go, gosh, I'm going that fast. And so the feedback worked and I slowed down. What is the cost of a driver feedback sign? I know there's standalone poles and then there's ones you attach to a pole or light.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, a lot of, the major expense for those is whether is getting power to them, whether there's a solar panel attached. You know, the driver speed pack, feedback sign unit itself is, is probably about a couple thousand dollars, but it's really getting electricity to it and figuring out where we can mount it that makes the cost vary, you know, it could be up to $15,000 in installation if we have to pull power for, for a certain distance.
Okay. The other thing I want to mention, graffiti is in your department, right? How's that working? I mean, I was with a constituent last week and he didn't think that we were very responsive to graffiti painting. And I challenged him and I said, well, how are you getting that information to transportation? Are you using the Mesa Now app? And I said, you know, you can geolocate and send it in because I did do it a couple of times to go into work immediately. So just maybe an overview of the graffiti is in-house, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we determined to keep the program in-house. We have a very dedicated employee. Actually, about 70% of the graffiti abatement calls are self-discovered. He knows where they're at, right? He knows the city and where, you know, so we actually find far more than we get from people. But his first priority is that if a citizen uses the app or calls it in, that's our first priority and we try to abate those within one business day. Sometimes there's access issues if it's, you know, we had one recently along the railroad tracks, you know, we have to figure out how we can get into the railroad right of way. But that's, just like streetlights, graffiti abatement is very high on our list and we're 100% successful in that one-business-day response if people tell us, you know, that they're out there. But he's out there looking. So- So it's proven to be a really good program.
Okay, thank you. I'll relay that information to him.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just need to commend RJ and the whole transportation team. They've done, they always do a tremendous job for District 6 and for the citizens out here. And I know we had some streetlight issues a while back, but they got on it right-of-way and resolved it. One of the issues that was brought to my attention, though, by one of the citizens was that there seemed to be something wrong with CityLink or the app, you know, where he had made the request on the app, and for some reason, it wasn't translating back office or something, the work orders weren't getting put together or something of that nature. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, RJ, so that that can be resolved in case others have any issues as well. But great job for all that you guys do for District 6. I know sometimes it's like trying to herd cats to get everything done out in the district because we're growing so quickly and so fast. But thanks for all you and your staff do daily for us.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you. I also want to echo, you know, in my district, we have the dark sky ordinance, and I think you have it in District 1. And so balancing between what residents want and then public safety is an important issue, and you've always done a tremendous job with that. And then I was reminded by my colleague, Mr. Freeman, I happened to be, in my district, there was a complaint about fast drivers, so I drove down the street and I turned, and I was going just a little bit over where I should have been. And so you had your camera, your speed thing, and-
You should have had a camera.
Yeah, no, no, no camera. Mr. Pombi, no camera. So anyway, thank you for responding so quickly and doing such a great job. So appreciate all the hard work you do, and they do respond. If there's a problem in the street, they're out there really quick, so you're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other questions or comments on this topic? Well, thank you, gentlemen. You do a great job. Appreciate all the hard work of the men and women in your department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brady, I guess we can move the Energy Resources budget to another meeting?
Tell you what, tell you what we'll do.
Okay.
We'll put Frank first on Thursday. How's that?
All right. Frank, thanks for coming again. We're going to, we'll get to. All right, we are a little bit behind, so we will press on. Next item is current event summary. Are there, council, are there anything you'd like to share with us? I know you've been busy. I'm sorry?
I'll wait.
Okay, we'll wait. I know we were all at a volunteer event today honoring our citywide volunteers. We have about 10,000 volunteers between police and fire and museums and COVID, so just wanted to double down on expressing our appreciation for all of the volunteers that helped the city of Mesa's staff to provide great service. So thank you. Mr. Brady, what's our schedule of future meetings look like?
We'll see on Thursday, so you can hear the energy budget.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion during this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are.